I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the meeting tonight and we'll get right into it with the approval of the minutes from September of 2024. I'll give you a minute to look through them.
Did we get those? Oh, is this, was that, does this work? Do we get the minutes?
We had them. Because they have everything looking. It's a thick stack. No, this guy, would these report, you got, that's it right there in your van, to the right.
Yeah, I know, I took it outside.
Dwight, do you need a copy?
Yep. Both these were short.
I gave them to you guys, picked them up the other night.
That's August, this is September, the great day. You can not get, because you won't, you may not pick them up, it might be something where, because you came in late, so we didn't pick them up.
Okay, so having a minute to look over them. And then for the September meeting, I would entertain a little like a motion to approve the minutes for September of 2024.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye. All opposed, motion carried. All right, on those claims that were tabled for the last three months or so, we have any discussion on that?
Had to table it again, right?
I would assume it would table it again because...
Cedric's not here.
Cedric's not here and I prefer to have a full house.
I would too.
Okay, so we'll table it again. If we were to jet lock with four, with four members here, if we were to deadlock, it would be inappropriate for the clerk treasurer to break the tie. So I'd rather have not, I'd rather have a five member, if that's all right with everybody.
Five men.
Okay, then we'll move on to the guest list on the agenda tonight.
You got the second set. September 6th and October 3rd claim.
Oh, okay. There are two months, there are two sets of claims. September 6th to October 3rd. Do I have a motion that we approve those claims as well?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye. Opposed, that motion's carried. Okay, so we're going to start with the citizens and guests on the agenda and tonight we'll start with Ronnie Hudson. You got the floor.
Do I need to stand up or can I just sit?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Well, one was limb pickup and I've seen Teddy going with a bunch of limbs. And I had half a tree fall over River Street and Amy told me they took three loads of limbs or tree or whatever away, but yet they left limbs on Dwayne's side and they also left limbs on my side. And I didn't understand why they didn't...
We were trying to get the road clear.
Well, I understand that, but the days after that...
They're still working on down trees. They're still working on down trees throughout the town. They have, they've got a down tree over by the railroad on Walnut, they've got a down tree over on Cemetery across the sidewalk. They're just trying to get everything away from the public, basically, so they have access. They are doing it.
Well, that's not what Bruce told me. Bruce told me it was my tree, so it was up to me. And there's my question, is it up to me or are they going to? Because the big tree part, I, my brother-in-law came up, cut it up, I've got somebody to take all of the big wood. But are the limbs that are laying out by the road, is that my responsibility? Or are they going to?
By limbs, it's just small limbs and...
Yeah, it's just the brush, the top of the tree that's, but it's laying over on Dwayne's side of the road.
What happened was we cleared those street and then we took three brush dumpsters or dump truck of brush, got rid of it. And we just pushed everything out of the way so that the street would be open. Then we went to the cemetery and opened that one. And I am a female and I was exhausted. They could have went on, but I don't know, they're doing it now, a little bit at a time, but they're doing it.
So we'll get it.
So I'll make sure they, I'll make sure they get to you.
Leave the brush and Bruce and Teddy will.
Yep.
Okay, that was a question, I mean, I'm not...
All right, that was a good question.
Also, white lines at the stop sign. I've mentioned this back in February. And I mentioned it again and Amy told me that it was on Bruce's list about three or four months ago. And now that I've cleaned the corner at my building, there's more people running the stop sign coming into town.
Have you gave a work order for that back to the line?
Yeah, he hasn't been doing as many hours and we're having a new trainee, so we'll put a work order on it and that'd be something him and the trainee can get started on because he needs to... And we do have a, what's Button's last name? We have a new town employee that'll be starting, he started training this week with Bruce and Teddy. His first name's Quinn.
Foreman.
Foreman, okay, that's, he'll be, he'll be along with them, so if you don't see anybody with, extra with him, that's, that's who that is.
Okay, and another question I had is, do we pay as a town best way to pick up the trash?
Yes. Yes.
Because the first Wednesday of every month is supposed to be big trash bin. I had a bunch sitting out by the pole there by my trash cans.
Did you get skipped again?
Huh?
Did you get skipped again?
No, they got it this past time, but it aggravated me that it sit there for a month.
Well, they only come once a month.
I know.
Big trash.
But you called them.
Yeah, and they didn't come back.
And they didn't come back. You know, I mean...
When you have big trash out, Ronnie, if you can just let me know, I'll call them and tell them, hey, big trash down there.
When they go around town, it's hard for them to figure out what's what.
No, I had signs on it.
Okay, we try to find out the address.
I wrote signs, big trash pickup.
Yeah, if you just let me know, I'll call them ahead of time and let them know that you're going to have big trash pickup. Okay?
Okay. And then I had another question. The agreement I made with you and about moving everything, you know, I'm still working on some of that, but I have moved quite a bit of it. And I drove around town and for what you're wanting me to do, there are other people that are doing what I was doing as far as they've got some stuff out there, but there is a lot of cars and vehicles parked in the same area that I had the stuff out in front of my building.
Well, a lot of them have already been ticketed and they're waiting to go to court.
Yeah, just, just going to say, so a couple of things, one, and I say this with all due respect, but worry about what you got going on, not what other people are doing unless you're bringing it to my attention. And I've said a bunch of times before, I can't see it all, so it's helpful to me if you see stuff like that, let me know.
Write down a address.
But that shouldn't be a defense to whatever you have going on, that other people are doing this or other people are doing that. So please do help me and let me know if you have, if you see something. The other thing is don't assume that nothing's going on, that's, that's happened quite a bit lately. I promise you, there is a whole bunch going on that you're not aware of in terms of...
Well, there, there might be, I mean, I don't...
I know, I'm just trying to answer your question, Ronnie, I'm just saying that...
I wanted an answer.
Yeah, that's the question, is please...
These people that I wasn't specifically targeted for the same thing that other people are doing.
There's a whole list and many of them are already in violation or are going to be fined, so...
We're not paid a fine.
They have paid a fine.
Ronnie, there's double this that the attorney has.
Okay, but...
He's taking care, the police department is definitely taking care of the ordinance violations.
Well...
It just has to take time to go through, you know.
And, but, so I don't want to pick you out particularly, but where Rose parks, isn't that in the same, she's up on the sidewalk?
Well, there's no curb, there's no curb there, until they get a curb there, you can't hardly tell when you're parking.
Well, and your son and then the church people are all parking up on the sidewalk?
Yeah, we are right now because there's no curb there and if, if, if they park that many van out there and there's anybody parking the other side, it goes down to one lane almost and you can't get through. Because the old sidewalks are like double wide there, which they should just be at one narrow sidewalk.
Well, yeah, but...
See, this is one narrow sidewalk, but ours is like two wide.
But I've got that grassy area that you wanted me to move my stuff from.
Just off the sidewalk is all I was worried about. As long as you're off the sidewalk, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, but we, we wanted it moved, there was supposed to be a white line showing where Milton property was because between that sidewalk and the road, that's Milton Town property.
Well, it was, it was that Milton had a right of way.
And I think, well, another concern with that is, if we're talking around that stop sign, I don't, I don't want the stuff out there that close.
No, it's supposed to be for the pole to the stop sign.
Should be clear.
Completely clear. Then behind that stop sign, there was supposed to be a line drawn where he's not allowed to put stuff out because between that point on was either the road or Milton prop, the Milton Town property. Because so much, so many, after the outside of sidewalk is actually, you can't keep stuff on the sidewalk and then on the outside of that, you were putting stuff out and we were like draw a line where you can't go past that, but that line hasn't been drawn either.
Don't we need to include that in the work order?
I don't under...
Because you were so...
From the side, from the sidewalk to the road?
Right.
Is Milton property?
I believe so.
I thought it was just that Milton had a right of way. I thought it was still my property, but Milton had a right of way because of lines and stuff that were run underground through there?
Always thought it was our property and then it was always the homeowner's responsibility to like...
Maintain.
But I don't know.
Yeah, I, I can't, I would not dare speak.
But I know from the pole to the stoplight, they were supposed, it was supposed to be empty, I mean, and it has been. And then Bruce was supposed to come and do the lining where things shouldn't be and should be, because there is a pull-in spot like for that garage there and, I mean...
He was, yeah, to the back side of the sidewalk, but I can tell where that's at. But my, is other people are doing what you wanted me to get done?
Right, if they're not, they're going to court.
You know, you know we're, we're not picking on you specifically, in fact, you're one of my favorite people. It breaks my heart to have to take any kind of enforcement action, but everybody gets treated the same, so I promise you that.
So yes, we do have things going to court for people who has violated their violations and not paid up, they have been sent to our attorney for...
To where they're not paying the fine?
Yes. They have now been sent to court.
So they don't need to pay the fine or their wages will be garnished or whatever because, you know, the court will be in charge of it, we won't be in charge of it. And it's, it's quite a list, it's quite a list, Ronnie.
Well, if, if there's a list...
There is a list.
Can I hurt my feelings if someone thinks that I'm picking on them?
I, you ain't picking on me because you ain't been there in a month. But that was, if you're trying to correct everybody, that I didn't...
It's all over town.
And...
Every angle. And I know you still want this book. There's three more that we have to update and then I have to try and do this next.
Okay, are we good now?
I'm done.
All right, next on our list is Stephen Brock, would you like to come to us?
Hello, how you doing? Stephen Brock, through Brock and Associates, the Indianapolis, yeah, actually, Cardinal, Indiana. I'm your financial advisor, I was your financial advisor on your last project with the SRF on Milton and you guys won a lot. You know, you've got a $5.8 million project, you had about $4.8 million in grant money from the SRF and that, that's one little lot. You know, you've got what everybody else wants to get and, and now we're kind of talking with your, your engineers on next steps, how to move forward with the past kind of view of you and that's, that's the hard part because nobody wants that impact, you know, nobody wants that rate impact. We were very, very fortunate last time and that the, the project came over construction bids and I managed to go in with your engineers and negotiate for you to just get the grant money and not have taken any loan. And that, that is rare, they hardly ever do that, I remember that one last time. So here we are back again and we've got this project and you got about 80% grant. The way it's set up now on construction bids, you got about a $970 million loan, which with your median household income will give it around 2%. And, and with this project, it sounds like it could probably get you 35-year financing, so get you 35-year financing, 2% interest, but it's still an impact on your rates and charges and we talked about that's going to be here. And that's, that's where I know we're at a sticky point. We, the current user fees and the state revolving loan fund always looks at 4,000 gallons and at 4,000 gallons, which is not what everybody pays here because you use less than 4,000 gallons, we're talking about 5876. And if we look at 35-year financing and go to 2% interest rate at $970,000, we're going to be up to $85. Now, that's higher than the SRF's target rate for water companies with, they, they try to target you around 65 and you're at 85. So I've called the SRF and I said, you know, and he's very, very grateful for the $4.8 billion that you promised him. But it's still a big impact on a poor community and you guys are supposed to be helping out poor communities. And they said, we can't promise anything more now because they have more people looking for grant money than they have grant money to give out. But they say, there are always people that will make the deadlines, you know, if you don't make the deadlines, the SRF's on a fiscal year basis, fiscal year starts on July 1st, everybody has to have their loans closed by June 30th or they take that grant money back. And then next year you can go back in the mix without having to be competing against everybody else again to see if you could get anything. And, and my experience is that when you go back in the mix again, you don't come out as well the next time. So, but some people miss it and when some people miss it, they can reallocate that grant money. We also have the ability if, when the project is bid, because these are just engineering assessments, to go back and talk to the SRF if it's higher or it's lower, to see what we can do. And we will definitely talk to the SRF again when we get to that point. So now we're kind of talking about timeline and see if you have, how you want to proceed. So as I talked about it, the SRF's on a fiscal year basis, you've got to close your loan with them by June 30, 2025, where they'll take your grant back automatically. They don't take any money over into the next year. And if you tell them, you can't close, not the other close, you know, they're on the quarters and, and that's their fourth quarter and they try to go to closing third quarter, but your engineers are already talking to them saying, they'll let you close in the fourth quarter. So that's giving them as much time as, you know, they've been in our back four years here. But it still means that the engineers have to update everything and get the designs going and get the project bid and, and, and what do you think? We'd have to put the project up bid, out to bid about when?
Ideally, we would have it at the absolute latest, out to bid by February.
And that's, and that's close. Out to bid and then get the bids in and then from that, I've got to put the rate impact statement together, I've got to put the diligence together, your, your bond counsel has to put all the legal documents together for closing. And then the SRF needs 16, usually 75 days to review everything and then they schedule the closing, which is another 15 to 30 days and all has to be done before June 30.
Yeah, so if we were to bid in February, that'd be May before they would close and that's like probably the earliest timeline, so that would push us all the way up against it. The absolute latest we could ever imagine bidding is probably late February.
That's like coming up to end of time to be able to camp our grant from the SRF.
That being said, there's also a piece of engineering in there that we would need 90 days for and that's item to like approve. So we don't really need to design a ton more because we already designed it with the last project, so we really just have to update some locations where things are tying in based on what was put in with this project. So the engineering and the engineering fee assigned to it are much lower than it was the previous time because we already designed most of it. But that doesn't alleviate us completely from having to get re-permitted, so permitting can take up to 90 days. So even if we were to go back to the office now and immediately submit for permitting in like two weeks, you know, like a quick turnaround, we, it would still take 90 days just to get permitted and then you wouldn't be able to bid until after that. So that's why we're getting up close to like where we kind of have to make a decision of whether or not to proceed, so that we can actually put everything in place to get to that point. So it seems like when you talk about it, oh, it's June, like we have tons of time to make the decision, but when you start to, okay, you take closing back, that's three months and then you take three months back for permitting, well, that's six months, now you're already in January and that's worst, worst, worst case scenario, right? Then if we get notice to proceed, we're able to, you know, push it through in a month and we have holidays and everything else like that, we're at that point where October town council meeting is kind of the meeting where we could get approval to be able to work on, on our stuff to move us forward. But the problem with that is that there's a piece of that that's tied to funding. So if you would bare minimum tell us notice to proceed and notice to proceed on all the professional services to get everything together, those generate fees. And so one of the things that we would need to do is process a ban to pay for those professional...
Temporal financing paid from the financing, you have nothing out of pocket.
Yes, to pay for the services. That being said, if you would get to the point where you bid and then you would decide not to do whatever kind of rate increase or the project, you'd still have to, you'd then have to pay off the bond anticipation notes. So you'd still end up having to pay off the professional services, but that's, that, that's like your minimum risk essentially. So we're trying to get, the hope is that we can get today at least notice to proceed on the professional services portion of it so we can get to a bid so that we actually know what we're working with. Because right now we just have numbers on a piece of paper. Because right now, we just have numbers on a piece of paper, we have what the SRF has granted us guaranteed. If our, for some reason, the bids come in lower than anticipated, we would be able to pay for even more percentage of it with the grant money. If the bids came in higher, we'd be able to go back to SRF and say, hey, can we re-scope, like, things like that. Now, there's no guarantee on any of those things. So that's where you're running into like, there's that very specific risk of the professional fees. That that is the part that is probably the, the biggest risk part that you'd be approving essentially.
And we did this all with this, this one that we're in right now?
Mm-hmm.
So how much is like the professional fees?
Um, so I already have, I technically already have like a signed contract and everything, I would just need notice to proceed. So I haven't, so that piece is done. Um, the professional fees, which includes just the part that you would be worried about prior to construction. Cause there's a construction, um, inspection services beyond this and construction administration services that obviously wouldn't happen if the project wouldn't be constructed. So the part, um, that would be specifically for engineering would be forty-two thousand dollars. And that's twenty-two thousand dollars for this and then twenty thousand from the previous project that never got lumped into financing. So we actually have outstanding fees that we were, would have to eat if you didn't move forward, which is fine. We'll, we'll do that, we understood that. Um, but that would be covered in that band, in that band.
This is for phase two?
Yes. So that was, that's forty-two for engineering. Then there's also the piece that would be for financial advising and your legal counsel, bond counsel. So there's, that's just engineering. They have their, their pieces while that would be professional services to get to that point. And I don't know exactly what that normally would be. Do you have an idea of what?
Uh, it probably total would be with, with bond counsel, financial advisory service, local council services, uh, under a hundred thousand, so we'd be issuing a temporary financing that would be paid for from the final financing, not out of pocket. That'd also pay the interest cost on the temporary financing. That's called a bond anticipation note. Uh, it's authorized through a bond ordinance that you need bond counsel for. And, uh, so the majority of the bond counsel work's done upfront, not later on in the project, authorized the project. Um, so just to summarize, we got four million, nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars of grant for a project that you need to do that you will lose unless you, uh, can close a loan with the SRF by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And to be able to do that, you need to give your engineers authorization to move forward on the project so we can keep that. Now, what happens when, uh, when we get to the point that they live the project out? And there are three things that can happen, the project can come in under bid, probably come in at bid out of estimate, or if you come in over, engineers estimate. So, uh, if it comes in under, we're in pretty good shape because it means we've got to borrow us. Uh, we're, we're gonna try to do, we're gonna try to do, and I'm gonna get filmed here. We're gonna try to do because we always like to talk. And we always like to talk to the SRF, the best deal we can for the communities that we work in. So we're gonna talk to them again. And, and I've already talked to them already, they said, you know, we evaluate this and look at us again. We're at least gonna get four point nine two. At this point, they want us to borrow nine hundred and seventy based on the engineering estimates. Uh, but like last night, we had the ability to go in and talk to them again and see what we can do. It may mean we have the scope, it may mean we can do everything, it may mean the bids can come in under, under construction. I was talking to a grant administrator today and he said, uh, he's had one project out last five that came in under engineer estimate and the others came in over. Uh, so that's kind of what we're looking at now. Uh, but we could always reduce scope and, and push something off to the future again. Uh, the SRF's probably gonna want us to borrow something from them. They're not a grant program, they're a loan program that has grant money with it. And, and, and we've been very fortunate last time to get a grant. And this time to get a much bigger grant, uh, to be able to move forward. But it's coming down to the time where you need to make a decision if you want to keep that grant money, uh, to give your engineers the, the authorization to move forward. And that's kind of the decision you're making today. And I'm just here to answer questions. Just like Wendy's here to answer questions and, uh, I'd love to hear your questions.
So if I'm looking, so we're looking like a hundred and forty-two thousand for forty-two thousand and then a hundred thousand on top?
No, 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 it's probably a hundred total.
Totally, okay.
Before this all happens, you don't need to authorize that tonight, you just need to authorize...
So I'm just saying, I'm...
But we'll put together a detailed sheet on what the costs are gonna be. You'll have to prove that before we move forward. But this is just to let you know whether you wanna give her authorization to move forward to be able to make our timeline.
Right, I'm just thinking, so the banker is saying, okay, so there's a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So if we decide not to, we still have a debt of a hundred thousand dollars.
You would have a debt, how are you gonna pay the debt is what you're talking about. Now, we've got a four point nine, uh, a million dollar grant at this point. And, and I, I can't make any promises what the state's gonna do. But they don't wanna see you raise your rates, they don't. But they've just got lots of people that are trying to help. So there's a good chance, well, you're gonna do part of the project anyway, at least part of the project. And that's all gonna be paid for with the grant money. It's just how much loan we're gonna have to take out. And at this point, it's estimated to be nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars at two percent as a banker note. It's a pretty good interest rate for thirty-five years. Uh, but I, I will also say that your post-project estimated user fee at four thousand gallons is over the target rate that the SRF is trying to target for, which gives me the ability to go in and talk to them more. And also your median house of income is around forty-one thousand. Uh, and, and the, uh, your disadvantaged community about fifty-two thousand. So you're way down disadvantaged community status, which gives me plenty of traction with the SRF too. And this is an environmental project, that's why you got grant money. And the SRF is an environmental funding program, they're out here trying to, to fund the environment. So we've got lots of things on our side to, to give me traction, to be able to talk with them about, to give your engineer traction talking about. But my business, I just wanna make sure you're aware of that, is that if you don't give your engineer authorization to go forward pretty quickly, then, uh, you stand a very good chance of losing all of that four point nine million dollars and starting out on square one next year, which will be a March application for the following year. And, and that's the last year of the four-year federal grant money that the SRF is getting. And it's gonna be a big year, everybody's gonna try to get in the last year possible. And, and you're no guarantee, you're gonna, more people competing against. And, and, and in my estimation, you'd probably get less grant money next year than you'd already got this year. You know, you won the lottery, you got four point nine two million dollars from the SRF for your project.
Oh, so two, we were on the lower end of the, so there's a funding list. And it's like, it's literally just like grade school. You turn in your PER and you get graded on a rubric. And everybody gets graded against each other. And then they put the top of the class in a list, right? And that's how you get funding. And we were at, above what they consider their funding line. But we weren't at the top, top, top of the class. There was a point in time where we were like, are we even gonna be in the funding range? We weren't entirely sure. And so, once we were in the funding range, well, that opens up this whole grant level. But if next time there was additional competition or somebody would score higher, it wasn't necessarily that we scored low, we scored high for what our project is. But if someone comes in and they have a different project type that would score higher, like, uh, we have lead service lines in our project, galvanized replacements, that gives us an additional scoring piece that other people don't have in their project. With this year in October, everyone having to turn in their inventories, a lot of people are gonna go in with projects next year for replacements. Well, then everybody starts to get those points. So an A becomes a higher number to get an A, right? Um, so I do actually agree with what Steve's saying. I'm not, I'm not convinced that if we went in again next year, we would get a better package than this year. I...
And costs will be higher, every year, things get more expensive. The SRF told me last year that the engineer, Kewell, said that they saw construction costs go forty percent last year from the year before, construction costs up forty percent. And I couldn't believe it, she said she couldn't either. But everything's getting much more expensive and certainly, uh, construction. So you're probably looking at less grant money and a higher construction cost if we push this off.
But to your point, you're all right, that's your one risk, right? Your one risk would be that roughly a hundred thousand dollars. If you would get to the point where you have a bid, you can't come to an agreement with SRF, then that is still debt that you would have us. And you would probably still have to assess a much less rate impact to pay off a debt that didn't actually produce a project. That being said, if you wait, there's gonna be fee associated with us having to resubmit to SRF. Again, that's also the exact same thing, it's a risk, right? And so you guys have already paid that fee for us to submit to SRF. Um, but then you go through, back through that exact same process. Is the fee high? No, but by the time you start thinking about, okay, I'm gonna pay ten thousand dollars every single year to see if we get funding and then not go forward with it, it comes, it becomes a moot point until you have a catastrophic situation in which then you can't quickly get the funding that you need. Um, so that's something to consider too, is that if you do leave it on the table, you also have the additional fee that you would have to pay to submit again next year and then not know exactly what your package would be. So there's a lot of like scary pieces of it because no one wants to be faced with a giant rate impact if everything comes in exactly just so, the way that we're predicting it. But also, I'm not a stragomas, I can't tell you exactly what the bids are gonna come in at. Our number is taking into account all of the, um, like professional services fees. It has a construction contingency in it and it has the construction costs. And those construction costs are based on an inflated bid of what we saw last year. So it's based on real bids in Milton, so we feel a lot more confident about it than maybe we would have in years past with not having an exact, like, we have an exact bid on these line items. Um, but that being said, you know, if only, if Lykins comes back to bid and they bid the same dollar amount, great. But if they're the only ones and they have a higher bid, because they're the only ones bidding and they don't have competition, those are all things that we can't control. Um, so that's kind of what you're faced with, is that sure, if we get notice to proceed, we would, we would start with our process of creating a ban so that we can ensure, as, since we're a business, we can ensure that we'll be able to get paid off. Um, that ban would then authorize us to start the engineering work. So that's also goes into that timeline too. So you'd get us notice to proceed, we wouldn't even start engineering right now. We would start working with ban, with the, with the bond anticipation notice, with the financial advisor and you guys' legal counsel to create a ban. And then next council meeting, you'd actually hopefully approve the ban and then we'd be able to start work. So it's like, there's that piece of it too. To a certain degree, we're able to work that risk, but it's not good business practice, right? So we would start doing that if we had to, but we're not in the case to be able to do that right at this second because it's...
So we're really just in a crunch of time?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And a risk of losing your grant if you delay much longer? And that's, that's the main thing I wanted to communicate with you today. Because it seems like we've got plenty of time, but you don't, you're at the right, you're at the right, that's the level where you need to make a decision. There's a good chance things aren't gonna happen.
Yeah, everybody knows that big government doesn't always work fast.
We currently have a sewer debt.
Yeah.
That went in, what, two thousand and eight, I think, was when that started. Came online like two thousand and ten.
Yeah, that was in the SRF.
That grant be refinanced to lower? Or is that creates more money you pay back on that?
That's a great question, that really is a good question. So, so two things, one, your, your utilities, you've got a water and sewer utility. And, uh, and the water and sewer utility are funded through the user fees for the water and sewer utility, but the money's separate. Uh, the money you collect from your water utility has to be spent on your water utility, it can't be spent for anything else. The water, the money you collect for your sewer utility through user fees has to be spent on the sewer utility, can't be spent for anything else. So you're crossing utilities here. Uh, two things, one, we wouldn't be able to pay for sewer debt out of, out of water user fees. Two, we got, I got you like a two percent interest rate on that two thousand and eight. And, and, and market rate for a twenty-year financing now is around three point eight, uh, or four percent.
No news.
Yeah, so, so it would make it, it's like, it's like a home mortgage, you know? You're gonna go back and you say, hey, can I refinance it? Well, you got a pretty good interest rate here. No, it wouldn't make any sense for you to refinance because it costs you more money. Yeah, so, uh, the SRF doesn't refund their own debt, you'd have to go up to the open market and look at that. And the interest rates I'm giving you and have gotten you are submarket interest rates, which, you know, you'd never be able to find.
That's the benefit of SRF, that's why we, that's why we submit to them, yeah. That's why they're there is that they are able to produce things with interest rates that are much lower than the open market.
And grant money.
Yep.
Grant money.
If we had to go to the open market for everything, we'd be, it'd be like buying a house and we'd be sitting there with the larger interest rate and then it makes everything just that much harder. And that's why there's these funding agencies. Because they understand that municipalities are not your average homeowner, right? It's, it's a, it's an essentially a nonprofit organization. That's what it is, that's what a water or wastewater utility is. It's as close to a five oh one three AC as you can get without actually putting in the paperwork. And they know that. And so that's why the government's willing to give these lower interest rates on the loan portions is because, one, they know you're good for it, everyone needs water, right? So it's a fairly low risk for them. But, two, it's helping the people the most that need. And that's why their interest rates are so low. And that's why we continually go to them for funding is because it's cheaper to go to them for funding.
So you guys just need to make a decision if you want her to, want them to move forward.
To create a ban for you for the next year.
And what you should do if you want to would be to authorize you, right? Put together a, a package to bring you for your approval, to issue a bond anticipation note. And, and we'd do that. And you work for a bank?
I do.
Ooh, we would talk to your bank as well, local bank would love that, to see if they wanna be, have an influence on, on a bond anticipation note. But I deal with lots of banks and lots of funding agencies and I can find you the money, it's just a wide interest rate. The SRF will pay the interest, uh, through the loan and grant, and they'll pay the principal back from, from what they're gonna borrow. But I put together a detail of what it's gonna be, how it works, it's a two-page little summary sheet I put together, uh, to, you know, what we'd be doing. And I'd be glad to have it for you at your next meeting. And, but at that meeting, it'd be the last meeting, you'd be able to give your engineers the go-ahead to begin, uh...
We need, for business, for business purposes, we need to know that they're gonna close on a ban. So that we can do the work and know that we're gonna get paid for the work.
Yeah.
Um, so we wouldn't be able, that's kind of the last meeting that we would know, okay, they're gonna close on a ban, they've approved a ban, and then we can then do our work.
So let's talk about the ban, bond as a ban.
Unless we, I cover that.
A special one, please.
Why don't we hesitate to give out? If you have questions, ask them right now because this is the second half of what's going on right now. But we were never here for the first half, so I'm kind of...
Not for me, I, I would like to hold off on it till you've discussed it, huh?
Well, I mean, don't discuss it with me because they have the answers. So my first question would be like, so if we had to finance four point nineteen million dollars at two percent?
You would only finance nine hundred thousand dollars?
Okay.
You got four point nineteen million grant.
Grant, okay.
Yeah.
And then nine hundred thousand?
I only brought one, just wanted to give to you because you're the finance person.
Um, so the engineer's estimate is five point eight roughly. We did talk to them a little bit about, it's not truly five point eight, but there's a couple of things we were able to do with this project that we can reduce off of that engineer's estimate. So there is some slight adjustments. Of the five point eight, the state has agreed to pay interest-free, no loans, no nothing, four point nine two.
You can always call me to talk about that, anything.
So we're estimating with the nine, the nine hundred thousand dollar funding, nine hundred and seventy thousand funding at two percent before discussion, our water rate will go from fifty-eight thirty-six estimated to eighty-five dollars a month?
At four thousand gallons, at four thousand, nobody here uses...
Right, but we have a minimum of four thousand dollars.
Oh, you have a minimum of four thousand? Okay, then, then that's what everybody would be paying. Uh, yeah, your minimum's four thousand, yeah.
Can't we change that minimum?
You can change the minimum.
It needs, it's long since it needed to be changed because most of the people in town are...
Yeah, so let's talk about that a little bit. And, uh, you, you, your user fees, as I said, are what finance your water utility. And if we change the rate structure, so we lower the minimum, where some people pay less because they're using us, I mean, some other people I could pay more because you still gotta come up with the same amount of money at the end of the day. Uh, you know, you gotta fund your budget. And you only fund it through the user, so we can lower it, but there're gonna be winners and losers, is all I'm gonna say. And the loser's gonna complain and the winner's gonna jump up and down. But you'll, you'll, you'll hear the complaints in the world and you'll hear the people jumping up and down.
So we have some residents maybe use, only use two hundred gallons a month?
Minimum, never, the lowest minimum I've ever seen, and that would be fifteen hundred. And most of them are two thousand, some are twenty-five hundred, yours is at four thousand. Uh, so, yeah, we can, we can, we can make a savings for, for some people. But again, there're gonna be winners and there're gonna be losers. And I just want you to know that up front. But again, there are going to be winners and there are going to be losers. And I just want you to know that upfront, that yeah, we can do that.
But you still wouldn't need to net the same amount.
So that's why personally I feel that it should be lower.
But like we still have, we still have to, at the end, if we still need $5,000, somebody's going to have to pay, or $5,000 a month, somebody's going to have to pay that. Either the person that uses 4,000 gallons or less or uses more than 4,000, meaning like, so they're still going to have to come up with the same number at the end.
So what you look at is, do you want to help the, the single households and the elderly or do you help people, families? Because you know, those are your two groups and the families use more water and the single people and the elderly use less. So you know, is it more important as a council, help people, families or to help?
I mean, for example, I have a single household, I use less than 2,000 gallons and I still pay the minimum up to 4,000.
The other way you look at it is some, some water rates for, for utilities are flat rates. Everybody pays the same thing and that's kind of what you are for 4,000, not a lot of people use 4,000. So everybody paying kind of a flat rate.
Right, flat rate.
But, but we can make any changes you want, it just takes more time to make a change like that than it does to do a standard rate study.
The majority of our residents use under 2, under 3,000.
So that's just, I mean, that's exactly what we're talking about, like you're, at the end of the month, you still have to bring in the same amount of dollars. So then if most people use less than 3,000, they might end up paying the same amount under the new rate study, honestly. Because if you had almost everybody under that 4,000 mark and you still need 50, 40, whatever it is, times the number of residents you have to be able to be solvent with your utility, you still have to come up with that amount. So even if everybody who was using 3,000 now paid a lesser fee, that would mean that anybody paying, using 4,000 would pay an astronomically higher fee.
And I don't want to.
I mean, I don't know, I know that nobody would really want, you know.
Explaining it to the people in town that we're going from 50 to what, 80?
Any five, that's just an estimated without any like discussion and that's what it could be.
Could be based on engineers estimates, we could be under that, we could be over that and we also have the additional ability, which I'm going to work as hard as I can to go back in and talk to the SRF. They either get additional grant money or the engineers to use scope so that the rate impact is something that you feel is affordable here.
Because that would put our minimum of 132.87 instead of 102.87 right now. 132.87.
What, what, what's wrong with sewer with water?
That's it, yeah, that's everything.
Form surer.
I just took the 30 dollar difference. And added it to it.
And again, too, telling us to move forward with creating a ban is not saying you want to move forward with the project. It's actually not even saying you want to move forward with the ban yet. You'd have to approve the ban to physically take on that debt. So this is us creating the ban.
Yep, just, just bringing the information for you at your next meeting to say, yeah, move forward that. You'd also have to hire a bond counsel because the ban is authorized by the bond ordinance that also authorizes the bonds. And that has to be adopted to probably the following meeting before we'd be able to, before we'd be able to get the bond orders written and you to approve it. And there's a 20-day remonstrance period on, on the, no, there isn't on water, it's only on sewer, so there's not a remonstrance period. Then we put it out, your bank or another bank, to be able to give us a funding agency for the ban. Talked to Clark about how she sets that up in her books.
My heart's hurting, I'll take this one.
Easily.
But I just, I just know, I just know what I hear every day.
And the biggest thing is just understanding that if you would table this portion of it, I, I, as your engineer, can't guarantee that you'd be able to close in time. Because this is not authorizing me to proceed, it's authorizing us to create a ban. It's not even authorizing any debt at all. This is literally just us coming to the next council meeting and presenting a ban. So if we don't.
So all you want right now is our permission for you to do it and then present it?
To support the information, but to realize that that next meeting, you'd have to decide to do this or you should just tell the SRF, we can't make the closing timeline, we're going to give you your, your 4.9 million dollars back.
So there's no, no charge at this point until the next meeting?
So on, so if we, if we did approve, is there a way to send that information so then we can have it prior to our meeting to review?
So I wouldn't be approving the ban because I'm the engineer, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So you could email it to me and I'll print it off and give it to them?
Probably in the next, if it comes out quickly, I can get information from engineers, they're quick, I know they're quick. Within the next two weeks, certainly probably in the next 10 days, maybe in the next seven days, I can get you my two-page summary sheet on, on the ban. And also talk, I'd ask you who your local attorney is, how he wants to use for, for bond counsel. If it would make sense to use the same bond counsel you used the last time because then he just has to update what he's already done, but that would be a decision.
With the same, with the Joe?
I think he might have, yeah. It would be Joe, your local attorney would be Joe. So you would ask Joe who we used last time for your bond counsel. I'm not entirely sure.
It just makes sense to keep because it's continuation of the same project, did everything in his file and it'd just be easier and cheaper for him to update rather than to get a new person and start a new scratch treatment.
I'm going to run a business, I should have been a lawyer.
Everybody should be a lawyer, yeah.
So I'm going to offer a banker.
Do you want them to go ahead and produce everything and send it to me and then I'll set up an executive meeting so that we can go over everything?
Yeah, if not, I'm coughing, that'd be great. Yeah, it's best time. You foolish not to.
I guess see what we can do? Do they, do they have to vote on it?
To approve us going forward?
Caution, you have to vote on the next meeting, not this.
We probably need to prove it though for counsel saying that we approved like them to move on.
Yeah, probably should. Okay, so I hear, do I hear a motion that we?
I'll make it.
Junior made the motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I got a question. Is this grant for construction only or what?
It's for everything, it's for the project, construction, contingency and non-construction.
Well, fire department?
Uh, it has to be water only, water only, it's environmental and for some reason they don't think that fire departments. Well, you know, that's, that's all the water rates and charges.
It also has to be based on what we submitted for. So like we submitted a P E R that was specifically for what project it was.
That's my good question.
That's a good question, I'm curious.
A lot of communities in Fayette County, they actually have outside city limits, so you pay more. We don't do that here. I mean, we have like probably what, 20 residents?
Outside.
That's outside and probably repairs their water lines, we do. Actually in 1963, they put in their own water lines. But now they've deteriorated and who gets the call? This group gets the call.
Yeah, so on, on fees, outside town limits, if you charge more than 50, 15% or more to the outside customers, the inside town customers, and those outside town customers have the ability to petition the Indiana utility reglet permission, even though you're outside of I A R C jurisdiction and been outside of I A R C jurisdiction for 20 years. They changed the law to the point that if you charge more, 15% or more, they can petition the I A R C. I A R C can call you in and evaluate your rates and charges to see if they're fair and reasonable. So I always recommend if you want to charge more rates to people outside the town limits, that we don't do, that it's below 15%. We can do that.
We don't charge anybody extra.
I mean, a lot of people encounter the liberty, 10%, it made it simple.
Yeah, 10%.
Because you got what, 7.5% to 15% is, was the range at one time.
Yeah.
And 10% isn't all that.
No, we can do that in this next, next rate round if you want. Your clerks have to identify for me how many, how many customers and which customers that you have are outside town limits and, and we can do that. And I produce the rate schedule that would show how that's done and when voice comes in, Keystone comes in to redo your billing software, we punch those numbers in and they would bill those customers out for a.
So do you want to do everybody that's in the county? Is that one of your, or just Wagner? In the county or just Wagner?
Anybody outside state limits.
Right.
So it's county?
That'd be, yeah.
County and Wagner.
Because they get, right now they're the same rate as in town.
Or they don't have to pay a similar fee? And their property tax is like 2% less. Yeah, so we're getting water actually.
Moving out town.
And then I'll vote for you guys.
Yeah, but we have control of the water. Anybody else have anything to add?
Well, I'll keep it.
I know, I, I, that's what I'm.
Fifteen, I've been doing this for many, many years, it'll be going into January.
They got voted me in January and let's go.
And again, our goal is not spend your money, our goal, your engineers, is to build what you need so that item isn't on your case. And my goal is to get your user fees as low as possibly can to be able to fund your operation anyways for our replacement and the net service on your water. And so a lot of it's going to be reworking with, with the SRF and get you a better deal than you've already got. And I do that.
So that's replacing, like you talked to last month, replacing the rest of the water lines, thanks to the water lines and adding the fire hydrants.
Yep, it's everything I talked about last month is this project that we're talking about right now.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's all in that pack, the minute.
Yeah.
All of our stuff then.
Nothing goes out outside the city limits, correct? Like Wagner Road, you guys?
Of the replacements?
Yeah.
I'd have to double check. I don't think so, but I'd have to double check.
I mean, because we do spend a lot of time out there making repairs. And naturally, you know, it always happens around winter time. So we actually have Wagner Road and we have Semiterrine Road. There's separate lines out there, it was put in, once again, back in the 60s by local homeowners because we have such an iron problem with the water. Did you touch that line out there last year, year before? Yeah, a year and a half ago, I think, on Seminary. But on Wagner, you got two lines.
Yeah, they're both rotten.
Yeah.
Abrenal.
Yeah.
Polyethylene can only handle, hold up so long and chlorine and weather changes and technology, that material has changed, so a lot of people still using it, it's an upgraded version.
Yeah. It's a long time.
All right then, we'll move along.
Okay, so you've authorized us to bring you information for, for the ban to you at either a special meeting or at your next meeting. We'll get you the preliminary information within seven or 10 days. And then you all have my phone number, any questions, you can call me at any point and I'd love to come to the next meeting and talk to you and tell you how this all works. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, I got it, it's totally fine, trust me, you're not your own, you're not, you're not unique in that, right? It's just like, it's a lot. Yeah, lots taken. Big project. Yep. We'll get you taken care of.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to discuss the community's participation in the county-wide economic development and that would be our.
That's me, it's a much simpler conversation, I think. My name's Valerie Shaker, I'm the president of the Economic Development Corporation of Wayne County. I have with me Jeff Plaster, he's the president of Wayne County Commissioners, I'm sure you all know Jeff. I'm here today, as Philip said, to talk about your continued participation in economic development. For those of you who may not be familiar with the structure, my office, often referred to as the E D C for short, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization contracted by the Wayne County government to be the lead economic development agency for Wayne County. And so we are funded by the contribution of numerous cities and towns throughout the county providing one half of their economic development income tax or edit revenue. Historically, Milton has been a participator in providing half of your edit funds. And that is to pool everyone's resources to support economic development efforts. You know, no, no one county alone can afford to engage an economic development office. So if everyone works together, it provides us with the funding and resources that we need to serve you. And so as, as of right now, we have seven participating units of government. And so we're going out seeing if there's an interest in signing up for another four years. So that would start in January of 2025 through December of 2028. Now, even though Milton currently is a participating community by contract, back in 2021, we did actually allow you to stop paying into the consolidated edit fund to fund the demolition of your old school building. Now, at one point, once that demolition was complete and that, that loan was paid off, you were to rejoin your financial commitment, but that never did happen. And that's probably partly our fault for not following up to see if you wanted to contribute again. So you're currently not financially contributing. But just so you're aware, currently you bring in about $2,200 a month in edit tax revenue. So that's a little over $26,000 a year. And so half of that or a little over $13,000 would be what would go towards county-wide economic development in the future if you chose to participate starting in 2025. But if you'd like, I can kind of give an update to the council as to what the E D C has been up to and what activities we've been pursuing over the last couple of years. Is that something you're interested in hearing? Okay. So the E D C is most known for our efforts in business development. So that's recruiting new companies and then supporting growing industry throughout Wayne County. And over the last three and a half years, we've been successful in working with 16 different companies in the county who collectively are investing $534 million into Wayne County and creating 445 new jobs. And so we're really proud of that work to help continue to bring in investment and grow the manufacturing sector predominantly. But we're starting to work in, in some other sectors as well. To be successful in business development, we have to have industrial park ground available. So we manage and oversee two industrial parks. One just up here in Cambridge City, the Gateway Industrial Park, and then one over in Richmond called the Midwest Industrial Park. So we have a little over 500 acres that we have available to market, that's considered shovel-ready, meaning we've worked with the communities of Cambridge and Richmond to make sure all the utilities are available, the capacity's needed to bring in new industry. Something else that we've been working on is community development. Even though business development is still at the core of our mission, we went through a strategic planning process in 2020 and engaged multiple stakeholders all across the county to find out what the community wanted from economic development. And it was apparent that we wanted, that our citizens wanted our help in improving the quality of life here as well. So we've since then branched out into community development efforts that have helped with downtown revitalization, blight elimination and your parks program, we were a contributor at $10,000 to help you with your new park.
And our sewer, more than the sewer problem.
That, that was the county.
That was the county.
Yeah, yeah.
But the same program.
Yeah, the same program and you know, you're eligible for the blight program, but lucky for you, you don't have any homes that are unsafe and abandoned. So that's a very unique situation that most communities are not in.
What you can't see.
You gotta get off of state road line.
But we're also working in housing development. Our board just yesterday approved $500,000 to go into a program to help finish platted unfinished subdivisions throughout Wayne County. So it will be an opportunity for developers to apply for funding to help with the infrastructure so we can get some more housing starts initiated across the county. I mentioned when it comes to community development and quality of life, that is really about helping to attract and retain our residents. We can't be successful with business development if we don't have individuals living in our communities that work at the businesses that we're trying to recruit. Everything works hand in hand. And so we realize that in order to retain and attract residents, we have to continually be improving our community as well as working on those business development efforts. So we're also managing a program with the Indiana Economic Development Corporation called Ready. And we're competing for up to $35 million that our region has been granted from the state. And so there are eight counties in east central Indiana that are putting forth viable projects to get a portion of that $35 million. And so my office is helping to lead those efforts, generate projects and interest. And soon we'll be making some announcements as to what projects have been selected for funding. And there will hopefully be some projects that will very positively impact Wayne County. So that's just a little bit that I've been up to. I know Jeff also wants to talk about a county-wide planning effort that he would like for us to initiate, that's sort of. like for us to initiate that's sort of, um, uh, building off of the HELP program that you all were great participants in.
So i- if you could bear with me for just a couple of minutes, uh, one, I want to go back to the blight elimination, um, program. That is funded, uh, through edit dollars, both the consolidated fund and the, the Wayne County Edit Fund. And so, uh, initially you opted not to participate in that, in that program, but, uh, it sounded like you have some, some buildings that you think might qualify. The issue becomes, does your community currently have an unsafe building commission that would go through the steps necessary, legally necessary, uh, to, to declare a building unsafe? And in this case, a house unsafe. We're not doing commercial buildings with this project. But, uh, if there's a house in town that you think is unsafe, you have an unsafe building commission, uh, to declare that an unsafe building and to take the necessary steps to ultimately tear it down, uh, and, and follow through on putting a lane, a lien on the property owner, uh, and ultimately potentially taking that property over by the city, uh, and finding a new owner for it. So, uh, we do still have money that, uh, is, is uncommitted at this point. So if you want to take those steps, let us know and we can work with you. If you don't have an unsafe building commission, uh, the, the county building department can work with you on what are the steps necessary to establish one, uh, and what would you need to do to, to follow through on those? That is still available to you if you want to pursue that. As part of the, the HELP program, uh, a participant in the HELP program, there is funding available to, to, uh, look at those properties. The other thing I want to talk to you about, you obviously were participants in the HELP program, uh, and you got some funding from the county, uh, and we worked with you on the, the, uh, the park, uh, playground project. So you have in excess of $100,000 that you, it didn't cost you anything to, uh, to pursue. We worked to, to line up a number of donors, including the county and the Economic Development Corporation, the Wayne County Foundation, uh, Sugar Creek Packing, uh, First Bank.
The list goes on and on.
There are a number of folks that, that contributed to that minimum $50,000 to be matched, and it was matched by, with $50,000 from the, uh, Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. So that park is, is really a visible, uh, sign of that participation that you all committed to more than three years ago now. Because all of those projects, and there were 33 projects that were identified, um, across the county, uh, through the HELP program, uh, all of those projects are underway and are funded and are, uh, coming to fruition, uh, in the next year, some of them maybe two years, but no more than two years to complete all 33 of those projects, a total of something like $12 million of reinvestment into Wayne County. Because we have some momentum developed in collaborative ventures like that, we want to continue that. We, uh, we talked to you, golly, a year ago now, uh, and, and we put in an application with Okra, uh, to be a participant in the Stellar Program. We were not chosen as a finalist for Stellar, but we think there's still, uh, valid reasons to continue the planning process. And so we're, I'm working now with Val and others, uh, the Wayne County Foundation, to come up with funding about $80,000 that will pay for a consultant to work with every town that wants to participate, along with the city of Richmond and Wayne County government, uh, through the Wayne County Foundation to engage in another planning process, which if you choose to participate, will end up in the town having another strategic investment plan. Now, the difference between this and HELP is there are currently no funds committed to that project. But by the same token, we're not asking you to commit any funds to it either. So what will result, if you choose to participate, at no cost to the town, at least that's our current plan, uh, no cost to the town, we'll go through a planning process again. We will identify for each of the towns that participates, your own strategic investment plan, and then there will be a county-wide strategic investment plan that will incorporate all of those projects. We also will prioritize those projects. And, uh, our intent is to have time with this, uh, with this consultant to work with you on prioritizing, uh, the Milton projects and also, uh, to look at what information do you need to work on, do you need to gather, uh, to be ready to go out and apply for funding, whether it's from Okra, uh, or, uh, other agencies of the state like the I H C D A, uh, or other, uh, private, uh, grantors, uh, so that you're ready to, uh, have on the shelf plans that can be funded by some of these agencies. So that's what we're hoping to do during the course of 2025. Again, at this point, the plan is to put that in place at absolutely no cost to the town, other than the cost of your time to participate in the planning process, which would be, we think, very similar to what the planning process was for HELP. But having already completed three or four projects under HELP, now we're ready to move on to what's the next project? Okay, we're doing this with our park, we're doing this with sidewalks, we're doing this with, you know, other things. What do we need to do beyond that? And to identify those projects that the community thinks are important. So we're asking you to consider, uh, over the next 30 days or so, whether you're willing to participate in that process. We're going to go to every incorporated town in Wayne County and make the same offer to them. And then by the, the first of, uh, of the year, uh, we'll start that, that program. It'll take about between nine and 12 months, we think, to go through that process and to have the plan finished at the end. So, uh, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, you've got 30 to 60 days, uh, to decide whether you want to commit to participating in that process.
And so Jeff's request is completely separate to being an edit community.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But I do want to share that the result of the strategic investment plan from the HELP process did lead to the E D C investing in the playground. It did lead us to investing in a new blight elimination program and now a housing infrastructure program. So I do believe that there could be opportunities that we foresee a strong funding need in the communities that participate that could lead to E D C, the county, creating some new programs to support those efforts. There's no guarantee in that, but the two could be somewhat, somewhat aligned.
And again, if it's E D C funding, uh, it would, in all likelihood, as it has been in the past, be limited to the communities that are members and contribute to the, the consolidated edit fund. So in, in this case, with the blight, for example, uh, the E D C is using consolidated money in the communities that participate in consolidated edit. And the county is providing funding for the HELP communities that participated in HELP. So jointly, we have almost $800,000 that, uh, that we're directing towards blight across the county. So again, another, another point to take into account as you're thinking through both issues, and they are, as, as Val said, separate issues. So you can contribute, uh, funding to the Economic Development Corporation, the consolidated edit program, uh, without participating in the strategic planning process, or you can participate in the strategic planning process without committing to, uh, sharing your, your edit money. But ideally, we're encouraging everyone to do both. I think we work, uh, it's, it's much easier to accomplish our objectives when everybody is participating and we're doing things collaboratively.
And so if they decide to participate in your planning process, they just need to give you a call or send you an email.
Correct. Correct.
And then for the edit contribution, I did send Amy the unit contribution agreement, which does technically designate one half of your economic development income tax funds starting in 2025 for four years. And so that would be a document that you would actually have to approve as a town council to enter into. And then in addition to that, regardless if you decide to contribute your edit funding, you all do need to fill out and complete, um, the capital improvement plan. Amy, that's that one-page document that I sent. And, um, attorney Ron Cross for Wayne County Government has, wants me to convey that for any unit to receive any of your certified distribution of your edit tax revenue, whether half of that is going to the E D C or not, you have to have a current capital improvement plan every two years. If not, the treasurer can withhold your edit revenue until you submit that plan to them. So that's definitely a document that you'll want to complete.
Absolutely.
And, um, document how you intend to use your edit tax.
Anybody have anything, like, make sure to do? All right, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
If you have questions, just get in touch, Amy. Amy knows how to do that.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving along, uh, was, was someone going to do the water sewer update in Bruce's absence? He was supposed to do the water and sewer update.
I know that they were, they're working out, they were working out on Wagner Road. They have two weeks out there. And I know that, uh, they turned the biox off at the lift station because they believe that that's what's making the, would you, Dwight, would you say the frothy mess?
Yeah, they're, that's, I mean, that's, that's a thought. I mean, Bruce is just trying to link it.
Yeah, they're trying to, the process of elimination because it's a mess down there.
So is Bruce going to still continue to come to our monthly meetings?
Yeah, he was supposed to be here. I'm sorry, that's a spam call.
Okay, then we'll move on to Tom for the police update.
As most of all of you know, I had unplanned medical procedure recently. Good news is, uh, well, first, let me, let me back up because there was misinformation out there. I did not have any medical, all right? I simply, through the course of seeing routine medical appointments, it was identified that there was a need for a medical procedure. It happened very, very quickly, um, after that, like post haste. So, uh, but I, I'm through the process, well into mending and, uh, back, uh, back in the saddle and we'll, we'll continue to get things back to normal. So I did want to just put that information out there. I also wanted to share with you, and then, and then I'm going to be done in the interest of brevity. If you all decide as a council that you're interested in the blight, in pursuing blights, um, or, um, Pershing, East Sherman Town, it are a couple steps ahead of us in this process. They're actually well into it. Uh, and of course, they share the same town's attorney. So it's a very easy collaborative effort to get with them. In fact, they established, I think maybe almost a year ago, they took someone not as a part of council and made them responsible for building and, and codes and building commission. And so, which was news to me, I thought maybe it would have to be someone on council that was responsible for that, but it's not apparently. Uh, and so they're actively advising us now of, of using blight money and actually getting the homes, um, dealt with through, through that process, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So know that it's not a big leap if you decide as a town council that, you know, if we have some properties that kind of meet those criteria and you want to look into it far, further, I'm happy to facilitate a meeting with them and maybe we could pick up brains a little bit and see how they set things up and, so, not a big jump, but I just wanted to mention that. That's all I have.
Who's laying it back?
Thank you.
All right, Scott, it's your turn.
You can tell we had a busy month. Really busy month. And we're up to 143 runs so far this year. That's a lot for what we have. That's a lot. And as Jeanette Junior didn't hear about this, we are revamping our bylaws. One thing we've really revamped is working out in our benefit. We now are expanding our area for manpower, 15-mile radius from the fire station. We've got people that's about that distance, maybe closer, that want to join the fire department. They couldn't, but now we're fixing that. So now they're coming in and they want to join and they're starting to train, do all that. So that's one good thing in our favor. And on, uh, my boys' situation, Dustin, since he works at Richmond Builder Supply daytime, he's made more runs than most of the other guys have on the fire department. He has permission to go, he screens what they are. If it's a major accident on 70 or some of our territory, really, we have to have extra manpower, he's not a respond from work. His boss then told him, go, no problem. If it's a working structure fire, he responds. He's made a lot of runs. And Devin lives in Newcastle, he's in charge of our EMS. When he's not working, he comes in town, he does paperwork. We have a run, he goes in. But since he works nights for I M S Indianapolis, it's hard for him sometimes, but he's been making a lot of runs. So, but he's been ready, moved to Indianapolis, so we probably will end up losing him on that. But we also gained two new E M Ts too. So, but I don't want to see my son be pushed off, I don't want to see none of my boys be pushed off because of distance. Dustin.
It's in your bylaws though. We discussed this.
I know.
It's in your bylaws. And the, he, right now, his residence is in Greenville, Ohio.
Yeah, but also he still gets mail at our house too, so. He's just staying over there, but he's planning after they get married next year, get them all started looking for a house where necessary. But he's just staying over there, but he still gets mail, so probably has to be there. So we are working in the right direction on this, but we, like, again, we still have to have turnout gear and we're trying everywhere we can get the extra money so we can get turnout gear. I better lose my turnout pants. I can't really wear them anymore, so I'll sacrifice those for somebody else because I'm more a guy that's going to be in charge of the scene, first, the first home scene or whatever, or running the engine. I don't necessarily have to have the pants. The coat, yeah, I will have to have the coat, but the pants I won't have to have.
Do you have the engine back in service yet?
Yes.
What was that, what was that?
The other engine.
They had one out first, like a truck.
Yep. And so we're, we're working pretty darn good now. I'm proud of the way we're going. And, uh, one more thing. Have you guys ever decided about the light over the apron?
Well, that's why.
Well, it's supposed to be a light over the door, bay doors.
Yeah.
Because at night time, when we come back from a rush or like that, if we got to take care of the trucks or anything, we don't have enough light outside to work outside or anything, or even put the truck light.
Carry the light.
The only light they have outside of the building are the two red lights on the side.
Yeah, there used to be a.
I thought there used to be one.
There used to be one, but the windstorm took it. So was wanting to see if I can get that replaced.
If you put another one in there, it wouldn't be a bad idea to put, throw, drop a pole in the ground, put one there at the fuel tanks too.
That was.
Richie asked me about that, if you could put a solar light over there.
Solar lights, so like this time of the year will work.
I would just drop a pole in there and put a lot of.
Or you can, or you can put like, um, dust the dawn or something like that.
Or you can, or you can put like dusted on or something like that. But solar, right now, don't even work.
Yeah, it's, and we'll talk about it.
Well, what we used to have on the peak of the fire station was a dusted on. On our albums, it worked good.
So you're already wired, you just need to-
Yeah, it's already wired, I just needed a ladder.
Put it on the list.
It's been on the list, I'll be discussing once I leave. I think that's anything.
Think you had a ladder, right?
Right, and got it twisted.
Behind the truck.
Yeah, ditch your hand just right.
I'm afraid of heights.
So did the little tart for the, the engine?
I got the tart.
It's on there. But that's all I got, just let you know that I'm very proud of what we're doing. We're going in the right direction.
Did you say that we'll support Happington at all? 'Cause I heard Happington Fire Department has gone belly up.
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
We did get one of their guys from, he wanted to come work for a while, but we really, really couldn't. But now he has an opportunity again, so he did jump on, and he's got a lot of certifications. Really good certifications, I'm very proud to have him on there.
And Happington's big shot on powder stop.
Yep, so is Pershing. They didn't have manpower for Pershing.
We don't, we still don't have it.
That's what I'm saying.
The 15-mile radius, it, I did it and gave it to Richie today, it's 15 miles is to the other side of Richmond, up like wherever Perry Indian is, past Connersville and to Newcastle. That's a big wide circumference.
Yeah, we went kind of wide, kind of helping out a little bit. Not saying that there will be that far a distance. So far, we know everybody that's talked to us wanna come on, has been maybe like around Greensport area, Happington.
My only concern is can they get here before, just can they get here safely?
They're not gonna make the first truck.
Without being on another wagon.
Safely, safely.
Yeah, well, see, they already know the laws about the blue lights, so. Blue light just asks for right away, doesn't say, hey, I have a blue light, I'm allowed to run, red light, I'm allowed to speed. No, that's illegal. Blue light is just asking, people don't have to pull over for it.
No, I'm not even asking that.
I said people, people just ask for it, or we're just asking the blue light, hey, can I have a right away, please? You don't have to, I'm just asking you to. Most people do, for a blue light, they don't pull over for a red light.
No, I'm just asking, would they be here in time to even go on a run?
Yes and no. And they could be here, they won't make the first truck, if they're that far away, they won't make the first truck. But if they go to station and they save the station, which is a big plus, 'cause we may have another run, and if we do that, then they could take another truck that's there and go check out that run.
So that would have benefited when you had four runs back to back?
Yes. It would. Cause we go that one run, we could have to do that one, then have to go another one, and back and forth, back and forth. And we just wore ourselves out, 'cause we didn't have no extra manpower at the station waiting.
What's your roster list now, how many?
That has changed, I don't even know now.
Yeah, I asked Katie for it, does that work? She couldn't get it to me.
But it's built here. Like I said, I'm very proud of this program. I may not even retire.
So is everybody over there, or are they all members of the fire department?
Uh, we've got two, that's all the other member right now.
And how, so what's the wait time to become a fire, to get on the fire department?
Don't work six months.
Is what?
Don't work six months, I think. I got the old bylaws, but I think we kept that one, so. Six months, they're supposed to be, no more than six months. If they don't pass all the training, then we'll evaluate them. They have to be trained and certified for six months for them to become a member. But we've also changed something else on that too. We've got like Nikki, she's also a nurse, she's an EMT. And she works for the military in the medical field, so she's got all the certifications. So we're gonna kind of damp her up a little bit more. And the new guy who's got all the certifications, we're giving him like 30 days, I think. For our next business meeting, we're giving those, that period. But if they have no certification, no training, they have up to six months to get, and the new guy, the one from Happington, he's also got reason, or he can do the training, goes through the in-house training, he can do all that. I certify people, he's been classified to do all that. So that's gonna help us up big time to get people.
So you can't be a, you can't be, you have to be auxiliary unless you, unless you go through all the training?
You have to be an auxiliary member. And after you pass all the training, if you pass your in-house training, then you can become a member. And then eventually we'll try and get you state training. And that takes time, 'cause a lot of places don't offer state training in this area. But IVF is trying to change that, so we're getting closer to have people there to do that. So we can, they can do their in-house training, which is just basic firefighting, nothing spectacular. It gets them, this is state legal, that they get some end departments where they can actually make runs and be on that. But we're still watching them, coaching and stuff like that. And now if they go to state, like I went to state, I've been certifying so much other stuff on there, even more than what we do. But I learned everything there, but they advanced me up even more. And that's what the state firefighters do, so. Like I said, if they got all the certifications on yet, we're trying to push them in there faster. If we get these two in there faster, then hopefully we get some more auxiliary members come in and work on them. That's all I got.
Alright.
You, we'll give a copy of the bylaw when you get done.
Yep, we read it the first time and we're gonna have to change a few things. So we're gonna read it three more times, make sure that they're all good, and we'll approve them.
And they read the updates last night? They read the updates last night at their meeting?
Yeah.
And we also added ten more.
And more bylaws?
Yep, there's only 20, now we got 30.
Oh, you went through those last night?
Hey, you was there.
Yeah, okay.
Will you pay attention? I'm having a test on you later on.
I'll wait for them.
But that's all I got on that, any more questions?
Anybody have anything else they'd like to say about the fire department?
Just let me know about the light and get it or not, 'cause that would also help the security.
Who could, well, who could? Me, me, I didn't know what, I haven't had another fit. I remember being there.
Oh, yeah. 'Cause it's really dark.
Yeah, they're not, not very secure that way.
No.
Well, the main light's still not been replaced either, that one over at the back side of the playground.
Oh, dang.
It's spread out, it lit up an whole area over there.
That's when Duke disconnected it when they-
Duke disconnected it and they disconnected the school light. And evidently it was all on the same Connersville city building over there.
Oh, yeah, and it got reconnected.
I tried.
She's, she's contacted them two or three times.
All the street light on, that Danica Street on Mill Street, it keeps going out, going on, going out, coming on.
You can go, you can go online and pick up Duke and report it. And then we had one up there on Walnut and Isor. They put in an LED light and it just totally changed. The light kept coming off and on, and the guy, I mean, they're contractors working for Duke. He just put a new light up.
That's like their replacement. That's like their replacement.
Go down, call them, knock on their house.
They put a light on.
LED?
Yep, by my drug.
If you drive to Newport Canyon, you hit the light board.
What are you saying? You following me? I hope so. So it may be ignored.
I'll call Duke tomorrow and figure out what's going on with that park light over there and then I'll, I'll submit your work order and then I know that I'm gonna check on Agnes's too again.
Okay, thank you.
What's going on?
Well, they removed the light out in front of the school.
You can't see, it's dark.
And it was down where it led up this, this end of Cherry Street. Now there's no light there, until the park goes up, then there will be a light. They're gonna see our park in Cincinnati.
I think about that.
They would have a fireplace lighting.
But even if it's just a temporary light?
Cause when they, those poles that we're talking about on the park, that'll put a lot of light on this area.
And they put an LED at my corner, oh, it's bright.
They are bright. It lights up the whole back of my yard.
Stay careful here.
Yeah, it's almost daylight.
It's not too dark in the shade.
It's almost daylight.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
We said somebody shoot that light on Mill Street.
That's why, it was too bright, I was tired.
No, they didn't, no, they just said, they just said, well, they want it to be dark, so they kept shooting that light.
Alright, so we'll move on to the 2025 budget acceptance.
I know you guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a discussion on that.
Okay, take care.
So the only thing that had it was the, did the income get changed? Did that affect anything?
No, that, that's ours, so this is the one that I have to, the, this one I can do at the next meeting. The one that you're asking about deputy clerk's payroll.
Yeah, but will that affect this bottom line?
No, no, 'cause it's not even in here.
I mean, it will affect, so that income though comes out of these ones?
No, 'cause I did it right on this one. I did it right on this one, on this one. Our, on our ordinance, I did it wrong, but in this salary or the, yeah. This one is right. The salary ordinance, wage ordinance is wrong. And I can fix that and we can adopt that one next month. It doesn't even go to affect until January.
Cause the one that is here is the one that we went over with this budget estimate.
Yep.
Is the final one attached to this.
This is the, the green.
This is what you gave us, and this is the final.
Yep. Trust you me, I was on the phone with Wayne Hudson because this is all new to me. He told me to call him after we get the budget done. He's working on everybody's budgets right now.
Did you find out about the fire hydrant rental?
Yeah, everybody pays that, but we pay it to ourselves. Somehow, some way, it is, it's hard to explain. I will get a detailed explanation. No, no, we pay it for ourselves.
So we charge that to, then, is that charged to like the residents?
I believe.
Like through the-
I, the way I understood it, yes.
Part of the water bill is-
And fire protection, yes.
Through, is that fee?
Yes. What is it? Yes, we do.
It's in the budget committee?
What is it?
Definitely is talking about.
Edit? We'll, we're gonna talk about that a little bit. The only thing that I need to know, and I can make the same change at the same time, if you're gonna unfreeze council's payroll.
And that would just be on this one?
Yeah.
This one?
If you unfreeze it, that-
Cause this can't be approved because that hasn't changed.
Yes.
So we'll discuss it in a little bit next month.
So I just need to know if you guys are gonna vote to unfreeze your own payroll. If not, that number will check, go back to the number for Y.
So this is the, this number here is with the unfreeze?
Yep. At the top?
That's with both numbers, the sewer and the top, is that right?
Yeah, you get, yeah, both of those would change. This is what, it is, if it changed, yes.
Is that something that we need to wait in, in that part with seduc's here?
That, that I don't know. Do you want me to put, just give you the number, write down the numbers on a piece of paper and that way you can see the comparison of this is what it was frozen, this is what you would get?
It would be a 3% one.
So this is, this is what we would get, right?
Yeah, or unfro, uh, that's unfroze, right.
They call it unfroze?
Yeah.
That's the froze.
For the town council.
Yeah.
And then down into sewer too.
No, this isn't, no, this is, this is when, with it unfroze.
That's unfroze.
Right.
Yes. You guys froze it last year.
Yeah, I think we had a couple of years doing it.
It was 1,000 for three.
That's why, that's why I was like, I'm gonna ask them if they wanna unfreeze it, 'cause I only know of last year's.
That was about three years ago, like three, but I thought it was about four or three, but hell.
But I, I give you the-
We can just give our opinions, my opinion is unfreeze it. That's just my opinion, I, I respect everybody else's opinion.
It's the no subject with no, the council?
Yeah, we can.
And then we'll, but we'll just do that, same time when we approve it.
Okay.
With that correction?
Yep. I just need to know if you're ready to sign?
The budget?
The ordinance, this budget.
This meeting?
Yeah, and I am passing it. And you can answer and sign and do your thing right there on the copy I have to send you.
So this is what we had discussed already?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, when I was in here.
No, that, this is what- The, the budget meeting?
Oh, right.
That we discussed changes? That we went over that, we went over everything. So do we need to make it on screen or?
You're making it right now.
Just right on you this, like you don't have to?
No, 'cause it has you right on there, yea or nay?
Oh, okay, that's like sugar red, huh?
Okay.
And then if we make a copy of it, that's what he provided, I think.
So now under town council updates, I'll wait till I need this back.
Okay. Park update?
Park update, I'm really excited. But the buildings, the, the park buildings are all, all three of them are finished and they should be delivered Thursday. And, and they've got the ground ready for them to sit down and they are beautiful. The corner posts, two of the four are, the bricks have already been laid and the, they're working on the three and four right now. I, I, I know the footers are four, and they were starting on the third one yesterday, I don't know, don't think. The sidewalk on Agnes's side is done, the water lines are in. The light fixtures for the four corner posts, which are really, really nice, are, are in the shop, ready to be wiring hooked to it. And we got more grant money for the basketball goals and the pickleball court.
A whole list.
A whole list, we had a very generous company that gave a lot of them, he's a former resident of our town. Ross Gels.
Oh, yeah.
And I found, I, before I came down here, our equipment was delivered today, so the playground equipment is here.
And that was one of the most expensive things in the whole show, that was more than the building's cost.
Oh, yeah. I don't know how bad I think that one was.
For some reason, playground equipment's really, really high, well, they gotta plant it in the ground.
Yeah, they install it, they're, they're gonna do everything. And they didn't know it was coming today, or they had the grounds ready, so they're, they're a day behind.
So if anybody has any questions or comments about the, the new park?
What Randy said last night, that you guys have to make a decision on the deal.
Oh, yeah, the poles, yeah, yeah. We need to decide whether.
He just sent me all this this morning.
We need to decide whether to buy the poles up front.
What was it for?
The poles for the lights on the playground. The, the two options are, we can either buy the poles up front and then do is we'll install the lighting and we'll pay a monthly fee for the lighting like we do all the lights. Or we can pay a bigger monthly fee and rent the poles and the lights. And after ten years, what, when the ten years, we would have the option?
So what's, so is there lights going in, in the cement, the corners?
Yeah.
Those are already, those are already, those are just decorative. These are lights that would light up the ballpark, the basketball lights.
Right, but we don't need, like, we want it lit up, but we don't want it lit up where it's gonna affect?
Well, we're gonna, it's gonna go off at night and tomorrow.
And they're gonna be a little, a little bright.
They'll put a timer on it.
Here's kinda the map.
I think there's five posts.
Yeah.
Do you do a lot?
They're not, they're not big streetlights.
Replacing the one at Agnes.
So it looks like there's four?
One at the back, one on the north, two, I don't know, there might be seven.
They're recycling some of the lights that have been hit by, of these poles that have been hit by cars.
So here, this is what, I guess, right, it looks like there's one, two, three, four.
And two in the middle.
Yeah, there's two in the middle, one on the backside and one on the front side.
That's not what I said yesterday.
I thought I said five.
I don't know, this is what?
It came from Duke.
Oh, it came from Duke.
Yeah, that was.
I think maybe Randy had a different idea than.
Because I thought there was two.
Maybe you forgot those.
And you have your four quarters.
Where's your, where's your basketball court and stuff at, though, in there?
North Street.
North, yeah.
North and, uh, Cherry.
Far up the right.
It's maybe up in here.
But this doesn't look like what Randy had to me.
Because I thought they said.
Randy wouldn't send it to me.
I thought they, they said there were two lights in the center.
I didn't know where the lights were missing, I didn't get up and look.
And then they were gonna replace the lights that they removed, one on each north and south and one on the west side.
I know, so you want another one?
Cause they were gonna run the power to the one on the west side underground.
He made a comment that he would like another one there right at the basketball.
Yes.
They say it costs more to run them than that to mine.
And, and.
Is there a cost in there, Dwight?
Uh, no, nothing is.
They said that, you know, if we just buy them, that's.
Another thing, this is what just shows you the four lights.
Which is mostly all the holes. You know, we have that and that, and that, and that will put off a little bit of light. But this is, wait, so where's the driveway and the thing at now, so is this gonna be up in the front yard? Wait, no, that's canal shade.
The electrical box thing, they're gonna move it to the side of that brick wall.
This is the front, this is the front thing right there, I was like, that's not secret, okay.
He's also looking. He's gonna move that, that electric box to the side of the, of the brick structure so it won't show like it shows now, you know, out there in the front.
But they're gonna pull in, and we're talking about pulling in electric line off Cherry Street, down the alley.
Yeah, under, for the light, that's what I thought it was for.
Oh, so they're, these are actually.
And an electric box.
Yeah. These are actually gonna be like Duke, like telephone poles.
They're gonna be black.
Black.
Like these, like match these out here?
Not too fancy.
Not, not as fancy.
And we could either get winter black and Randy picked black.
No, but I mean, like, would they be similar to the ones, I mean, they're not gonna be as fancy.
They're gonna look like a telephone pole, but.
Some of them are gonna be parts of the, they're gonna recycle a couple of those that got hit by cars. We got three that have been hit and they can use part of those as what.
So are there gonna be lights like this, or are there gonna be lights in here like that?
I think you just talked, I mean, you guys.
If we buy the poles, Duke does the lights on, on those poles.
Yeah, but they can tell you, you can tell them what kind you, I didn't know if it would be like, cause those won't, really, these don't put off very much light. Just because they're not supposed to, they're supposed, cause it's too much light, so I was, didn't know if they'd have like that kinda light we face.
Now that Randy's shared the information, we can go back in and talk to him to which ones are you proposing?
Yeah, cause you can call him to hear.
Well, what we just need to decide is whether to buy poles or rent them.
Yeah.
I say buy.
I say buy.
I'd say buy.
Like how much is it to buy, do we have money left in the department, in there to buy?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we've got money left, and they're gonna, like I said, they're gonna recycle some of that other stuff.
They're recycling a lot of things over there, a lot, they're saving this.
So do we need to propose a motion on the second that we buy?
So what's the difference?
It's significantly higher and it goes on indefinitely, but after ten years you have the option again of buying it again. But I would say the long line, it's gonna be a lot more money if you rent them.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Thing is, if you rent them, there's something, like if it needs a new light bulb or needs like.
Well, they'll. We're just talking about the poles.
Oh, they'll put the actual lights up?
Yeah, they'll be, Duke's gonna do a lot of it. And I, I didn't really ask Randy what the lights look like on, he just, we were just talking about the poles money.
Are you talking about like lights at that, or you have like lights like on?
I would hope on the basketball would be more like that, but.
I would think that would put off more light.
He said that we could set up a meeting with the, with Bronson and he would, who works with Duke. He's a con, they're a con, they're a guy. And he would come in and explain everything to us in detail.
I mean, that's just, there really is out there to do that, yeah. And then supposedly Turpin's got the wiring and the conduit, yeah.
The conduit's already in the holes where they put, where the corners are already installed.
Yeah, the corners, everything's ready for the hookup.
Yep.
But it's remarried.
Canal Street, those are ready.
Powell's son's gonna do the trenching.
Yeah, he said.
Can't use a trencher, cause of all the brick.
If you look in the dirt on the corner of Canal and Cherry where that they dug out, it is nothing but brick.
Brick, yeah, they filled it up with school.
It looks like all of them will be LEDs.
So do you wanna set up a meeting so we understand it all?
Yeah, I mean, he just gave you the list of all the lighting that was out there.
Cause I didn't really understand what the lights were gonna be, just the difference of supply.
He made a statement.
There's another picture in there, though, that shows how much light it would put off, go if you look.
Like these lights out here, you wouldn't wanna put basketball on there.
Right, but if they're, if they're LED and they're good lights, four is gonna be a lot of light.
Yeah, because that LED right there is halfway down both sides, all the way around the street.
And you, the four corners are gonna put off some light.
We kinda talked about like a light maybe this high off ground. Not a street light.
You will be able to see like it's daylight.
Okay, when I got that after Jordan, like, three times, somebody, strangers, which I know are seeing people, right, is walking in the alley.
Yeah.
And it's always a guy.
Yep.
And that is a very.
He said major guys on River.
Not big, but they're guys. You know.
Somebody was out walking around River Street like twelve thirty, the next day, I saw something on Facebook, somebody said something about gas.
Yeah, he's been out there, and that one I don't want to see again. Like I said, they, they're strangers and at midnight.
That's when I saw.
Do it out walking down.
They were on River Street the other night at midnight, after midnight.
Yeah, and it's a very uncomfortable feeling.
I, I thought Ronnie's light was gonna come on, don't you have a motion detector light on the front? But it didn't come on, it went down the side.
Yeah, but it's just very uncomfortable, so any kind of a light would help.
I think so. Yeah, wasps are the best.
So we're gonna talk to a group of bike poles or we're gonna decide on?
I think we should have, Dwight, if you wanna reach out to Randy and see if he can come in and.
Just clarify which ones he's.
Yeah, and, yeah, because I, I'm confused, cause I thought he said two in the middle and they're replacing the ones that on the outside.
Well, he made a comment to me about, maybe you have a little light, maybe about this high off the ground? Just around the sidewalks in addition to the hanging lights.
So see it from Cincinnati? You'll see that part from Cincinnati.
We have a curfew, why do we need that much light over there?
That was just his thought process. And it could be that the major lights could be turned off at a certain time in the night.
Yeah, cause the.
And then these small post lights would just be around the sidewalks.
Before coastlines.
Like those.
But they're just decorative mainly anyway.
But I think more than anything, he was just giving clarification.
Yeah.
On buying or renting so that that time lapse doesn't.
So if we buy the poles?
We had to make that decision before what, the end of the month or something? Because then it would change, the pricing would change.
So if we buy the poles, Duke will still put a light on it?
They're putting lights on it, yeah.
Even if we rent or don't, so if we, if, but we still have to buy the lights or no?
No, I just call them. Like right now.
Yeah, I mean, there's all different kinds, I didn't know if they just put their standard light on it.
They'll put LED, they're, they're switching over to LED everywhere.
Right, but I mean, do they put their standard LED light, whatever they wanna put on it?
Probably, I don't know.
Or is there a certain one that we can choose?
Yeah.
We'll have to talk to Randy to see what he was thinking on that, because I really didn't understand.
I mean, he kinda has one light globe like that. That would be the fourth one's on the corner post.
But like something like that back here, like kinda like that, that hits off light for the rest of it.
He's the one that's negotiating all this and those.
Yeah, Dwight, if you wanna just, having come down and explain it to us?
Yeah, because when he gave me this, this morning.
We can meet over there.
You've got numerous lights.
Yeah.
It's a lot of lights.
Yeah, when you said that's above the lights, and then I flipped through.
So then we really don't know how many poles we would settle on anyway, so we can't.
Well, he hasn't much larger printout or layout where he had to. Like I said, he mentioned maybe, you know, a light just up the height of these tables, just in sidewalk areas and the main lights would be off.
I, I can't really see.
No, I mean, that I would just kick over. I'd be willing to go out and buy a hundred dollar, a hundred dollar worth of little solar lights out there for the sidewalk. Then have a kid tromp over a hundred dollar light.
If we have that much light, we have even four poles and then the four corners, that's still a lot of light.
Yeah, the four poles definitely would, when they're gatelocked, they're pulled, those lights go off. Period, because I'm, I, I wanna sleep and so do the neighbors.
Right.
And never seen a daylight there, you haven't seen at night.
So we're gonna try to get with Randy?
Yeah, Randy needs to clarify this.
Yeah, maybe we can meet over there and be in it and know where they're gonna be.
Whatever you guys decide.
You can be on the golf cart.
Yeah, that'd be.
Cause there's plenty of recreation poles.
Okay, so that pretty much wraps up the park updates and then under unfinished business, we're talking about accepting the clothes for the fire department rescue truck tire replacement.
Yeah, this is the estimate that I showed you, no one voted on it.
Is that the only?
That, there's two different ones, county tire and green spork alignment. They all work together, it's an emergency service, it's a flat rate, there's no other pricing period. You got cho, choice of two tires.
What truck fits on? The emergency rescue.
The rescue.
All type of event?
Yeah, well, they're replacing four.
That's a rear one.
What?
I replace the four would be the rear one.
Oh, yeah, probably. Ken already said that he, he would go with that one.
Well, yeah, we'll do.
That's five hundred on cheaper.
Well, yeah, we'll go with the cheaper one. I mean, is there a big difference in the quality of them?
I don't think so.
They're round.
Yeah, I got treaded.
If it's a penny tread, if you, if you, if you, if you.
I don't know, something major Randy can't get right now.
She said the township was going on with the second one.
Yeah, probably the twelve hundred.
Yeah.
So we pretty much have to stick with it.
We pay half.
This is the entire, for all four.
And we pay half of it.
Is there funds available?
Yeah. They've actually not asked for much this whole year.
Maybe they're not bad.
No.
Do we need to vote on that or?
Yes.
I entertain a motion, if we, someone make a motion that we approve the purchase of the tires for the, what's the name of the company?
County Tire.
County Tire.
I'll make a motion.
Do you need to make some motion?
I'll second on the motion for Goodyear.
Yeah. That's for twelve hundred, right?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries?
So before we go on, should we have him set, should we have a quote or do we need a quote for that light? Or like, how much or something like that light that he's talking about?
Oh, I don't, I've asked them to get quotes so you, you guys can battle that one.
You mean with Randy?
No, that light for the fire department?
Nah, that's a dumb light, ain't gonna be that much.
Well, and we need a light over at the pump, the, the fuel.
So I guess we would have to have a quote though, right? So I guess we would have to have a quote though, right? I mean, like, or I just.
Something, probably just have a town light for the stuff already there.
Yeah, the wiring's.
For that one, but not for the, um.
Fuel, the pump.
Open park, that's their light, they should just.
No, the fuel, the.
Oh, for fuel, huh, okay, yeah, probably you close that then. That's a very power line out.
Think about fence around those.
I like that about it. I've asked when, when we moved them.
Around those.
Everybody's.
They don't bring them in, actually, cause it makes it darker in there where people will show you in there and fill gas.
No, I'm talking about chain link.
Oh.
So it would be visible.
The thing is, the thing is, with it being on that gravel, that, that chain link's gonna freeze to the gravel and they will not get it open.
Huh?
It will freeze this one into the gravel and they'll never get that chain link open.
Yeah, but they can, I mean, so you can put it up, I asked, depending on where you put the chain link at, so they can swing it.
I asked when we first were moving them over there.
But they're gonna have key locks on them.
Yeah, they got lock.
I don't see anybody key locking that real action.
It's on a camera.
Yeah, it's on camera.
I wouldn't worry so much.
It is for, probably for some more security issues, so there's no.
I'd be, I'd be more worried about somebody hitting with a car or truck than I would be anything else. These poles will not pass it.
Okay, then, um. Since trip or treat. People don't like their kids on, prowling back and forth on Central on a workday. And the first Saturday would be November second. So. It's up for ideas, whatever, anybody?
That's what, that's what we did last year, was the Saturday after.
We did a Saturday after.
And we had a really good, um, turnout. There was a ton of kids in town.
I don't know when the other towns are.
The thirty first. Everybody's thirty first, all the way down the.
We have a lot of, um, like truck or treats now and like.
Maybe when our park is, maybe when our park is complete, we can start doing stuff, cause the driveway or, or the parking lot all the way around it. Shut the street out and truck or treat right there.
I mean, you have a lot of those in different communities.
Is this a safer?
Things, and so.
One location.
Right. So you have a lot of that already that starts Thursday, Friday, Saturday and all weekend, so.
So November second from six to eight, okay?
Probably, yeah.
I'm saying doubt candy, no matter what they're handing out.
Then I, the update on the, um, chickens. That ordinance. I just need you guys to sign it. It's everything that, um, is supposed to be. So I can put it in the book.
And those people with the roosters didn't move, did they?
No.
Yeah.
They were staying two weeks.
So did we need to make a motion? Do we need to?
You already mentioned this.
You already approved the, the chain, I just added the four H.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay.
We approved that already, we just added it to the book.
I just added it. Oh, I didn't.
And there like four other ordinances out there?
Yeah, I've been waiting on this for, since, let's see, this is October, not February. And the employee handbook. Jeanette, thank you for already having that and telling me.
See, I have my review, that reviewed, I just, I'm just ready to go over it whenever everybody else has it.
Then we need to discuss, um, McAllisters. With these, uh. Generators. They're not going to service them if we do not. If we do not fill out this thing in the financing. We don't fill out the financing and accept their, whatever their thing was, seven thousand nine hundred sixty six dollar.
About both generators?
Um, yeah. I think so. Yep, both generators. If we don't accept it and fill this out, then they are not gonna service anything. So I just need to know what you want me to do.
How many years is that good for, Randy?
A year. Might have a year. Or three.
Cause when they first put in the.
Thirty-six months.
That's right, for a year.
Three years, so that's what they, basically we had to track before.
So that seven thousand dollars a year? Am I?
Well, that's seven for the three.
For three, three, three a year green total, seven thousand nine hundred sixty six.
Two something.
For two.
And how many times will they service? Like, do they, does it say on there, like, do they do it quarterly, semi-annually?
Probably once a year.
The first year, they do everything in September, or they're gonna do everything in September. Preventive maintenance, coolant sample, battery replacement. ATS inspection on the other one. They just, I can't stress to you enough that these have got to be done.
These are the generators, right, that we talked about at the shop?
Yeah, no, they need a bomb, of course. They should've been fixed a long time ago.
Well, we didn't know they were broken till Christmas.
I know, I was gonna say that Bruce can tell us.
Yeah, we didn't know they were broken.
So just give me permission to fill out this credit.
Maybe they'll tell me if I'm checking like I can't get people to service them.
So does that, so we have to fill that out, even be, to be approved?
We have to fill this out, send this in, and then they will approve us. And then they, I, I have to send in a whole lump sum, seven thousand nine hundred sixty six dollars.
Do we have that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then they will. They'll send me a bill, but I don't pay it. Does that make sense?
Cause you prepaid.
Cause I'm prepaid.
But does.
That was a problem.
We are periodically gonna be accepted.
I can't say who, I'm sure we will, but.
I don't think I had that comment before.
They want the, they want the eight thousand dollars of your business.
And that's how, for how many generators?
Two.
Two.
The one at, the main one and the one out here?
Both on the short plant.
Right, one of this one and the one on here.
And that's a half, too.
That's a pass the herd, too.
I mean, the first visit, they'll probably just go through everything. Be checking how much voltage the generators.
We hope.
Putting off.
The only part that bothers me is if they've been sitting all that time and that diesel has jelled up, have they been, are they destroyed?
Well, I thought Donnie Anstott was taking care of that for a while. But Donnie Anstott was asked to come in there when Terry was complaining about the cost. And Donnie said, well, I can do it for this. So what did Donnie do to it? That's been a few years back.
As far as I know, I think he ever done them, same going to it, yeah.
I mean, we could probably pump the oil out.
If we have to, yeah, they can actually put regeneration stuff in that diesel and revive it.
Right.
All this gel.
Yeah. All this gel up, had no doubt of it. They have to be cleaned up and lined, displaced and everything.
But then my concern is, does anybody know how to go down there? And get it to where it's gonna kick on and cycle like it's supposed to?
Well, we have to run before they do that.
I understand that, but does anybody know how to do, do, does Teddy or Bruce?
Bruce knew.
Do they know how to upgrade?
They did not. But I've been to run since Teddy's been here.
Since Teddy's been here?
It's been a couple of years.
Two years, or maybe you're fifteen years.
A long.
It's a long couple.
It's a long couple of years.
He probably knows how to start.
I'm just saying that, because everybody kept saying that's not, like Dwight even.
That's why we always have had problems with it. And, uh, Turpin's worked on several times.
So we just gotta get them fixed. So I'm gonna fill in that.
Yeah, they'll take the right, make sure they get all the paperwork.
I'm gonna fill out that application and get everything sent in, and if we get approved, then I will send a check with the diagram that was sent to the JNC of seven thousand.
Yeah, mine.
Nine hundred sixty six.
So is that, so is that the one that should be kicking on down here?
That one down there should kick on, they know should kick on.
Both of them should kick on.
Maybe what I'm good. That one down there, even while it was running, well, it should've kicked on, it wouldn't. Turpin worked on it a couple times, actually several times. There's a switch that kept going out.
I just don't wanna go down there too many, I mean, I wouldn't do anything to work.
You do.
Yeah, I really do.
I'm sure Dwight does.
I mean, I know that, I can say this and honest, and be honest with you, I know that Bruce is concerned about that sludge that's bothering him.
It bothered me.
Because they lifted every manhole in this town and there's no trace of it whatsoever.
So where'd it come from?
Has the restaurant over here been checked again?
They don't even have grease. Their pizza oven. Their pizza oven.
The only thing I'll hear you say, check every manhole, we just.
Teddy did it.
Teddy did.
So they don't have grease over there, what are you gonna do with that grease?
They don't have fryers. They only have ovens.
They might have a little grease, but.
They don't have any deep fryers.
They, they have, there's some water separating in there, that's the time I'm still, I made a book on that.
Now there's a grease crap.
Yep.
So Bruce says they only, when this started. Property over here had some issues and they did, you'd have to ask him all the details because it's, it's long. And he thinks that's where it kicked off.
Which property?
Over here.
Or? With her too.
So there's no way of proving it, but he thinks that's where it started. But I don't know. But they, I mean, like I said, they checked, Teddy checked all the manholes. And he did not feel, I mean, he's no feeling of oil or grease or anything like that. But like you and I said, our, Dwight and I's main concern is turning those pumps on and running it until we hear gravel running through the pump.
That's why I'm gonna feel like somebody's going through the line somewhere.
I think it's right here at the, at the, uh. Well, right there on, before we go across the bridge, that manhole cover, I've asked Teddy to pull the lid, he's gonna pull the lid tomorrow afternoon.
On Wall Street.
No, on Main.
On Main.
That's where all the sewage comes in at.
In front of Joyce?
Yeah. And, and the reason why is, is that after the system got put in, someone line bored through that manhole main. And all you got in that area is gravel, gravel, gravel.
Right.
Well, that's been probably twelve years ago since it got bored through. And when you see that water flowing in there, it's coming at a pretty fast pace and it's probably deteriorated and created a new path. And pulling in the, cause we've seen the gravel, all, all, all of a sudden it comes out. And all that's, is pretty heavy gravel where all that's setting in. So.
I, I, I still, probably should have crewed around a camera too.
They did.
Yeah, they did.
They did. A second time.
They did, a week before, like. They were over there all day.
They ran all the way up Main. Because what the original thought was, that did. Likens, when they were putting the water main in, because we were down there racking our brains, okay, what changed? What, this, what, 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 what? The water main coming in was the only change. And then they made a change in the construction of that right here at the light, because they had to go around the weights. So they went out forty feet and in and then back around. So then they hit something out there. Can't find any trace of that. We need.
Well, they hit some up there, down from my house, right at that corner too. They had that dug up several times.
Right here.
Yep, I found the outside track.
And on, and, and brick.
Yep.
I didn't even think about that.
They had that dug up at least four times.
That was there by Duffins, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's where the, that's where.
That was there by Duffins, they actually hit it, had to put it in new.
Yeah, they had it, dug it up at least four times.
Okay, so that's the main issue right now.
I'd have, I'd have, I'd have run a camera from Main.
They ran it all the way up.
All the way up top.
All the way to the ridge.
It's been a whole day or so.
There you are, yeah, this second time.
So the issue with the gravel getting in the pumps, you're gonna gain the.
Lots. And you could hear it.
Oh, damn, sure.
And it's really loud.
All right, I guess we'll move on and.
They're getting the bastards in.
No.
What, what was that?
No.
They're getting the bastards put in.
Cooley has them, but they haven't brought them.
Last minutes we talked about, they were supposed to be in that week, I thought.
Somebody said they were in, except put them in.
But I get that, they have them, they, Cooley has them, they just haven't brought them in and put them in.
So Cooley has to do that, or is it something that we?
That's just, I'm just telling you what he said.
I thought Bruce was gonna put them in.
I have no idea.
I don't know what, what they, what they.
All right, then, do I have a motion that we adjourn for the night?
Make motion.
Joy does.
I'll say it.
All in favor, aye. All opposed, all opposed.
Joy's right.